First off, I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Dave Timms. We could all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll call, please.
For Camarillo Airport Authority Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Mulchay.
Present.
Councilmember Craven.
Here.
Bill Thomas.
Michael Hodson.
Present.
You have a quorum. For Oxnard Airport Authority Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Councilmember Perallo.
Here.
Walter Calhoun.
Here.
Eugene Fussell.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Do we have public comments? We'll do approval of the minutes. Bingo. Approval of the minutes? Do we have had the opportunity to read the minutes? Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Supervisor Zaragosa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
And?
One abstention? Okay.
And for the Camarillo Airport Authority?
Move of approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. We approve.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes, at this time, do we have any public comments? Anyone wishing to speak before the either the Oxnard or the Camarillo Airport Authority? I do have one speaker card. I'll have Sheila Haskins, please come on up. And in that time, if anyone else would like to speak, you may do so following.
Short person. My concern is, I expressed it at the commission meeting last week, there's a page, the front page of the contract that's being offered, not the details of it, but the front page has got a lot of personal identifying information on it that I think is very dangerous to be part of the contract itself. It should be a contact sheet or an application or something like that. For some pilots, it's even going to include their social security numbers. And that's information that needs to be protected because it can be available to people with the FOIA Act. And that doesn't seem important right now. The attorney said that you could redact it, but in five years, nobody's going to think about that so much. And those contracts are going to be available to the public with people's personal information. And it'd be ridiculous for the airport not to have a separate file of how to contact everybody. So I think it's really important that that page of personal information be protected because it's the county that it'll cost if it gets out. So not just the airport. So I think it's something that everybody has to think really seriously about in today's events. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, would anyone else like to make any public comments, particularly for items that are not on the agenda as we go through each agenda item? We'll offer an opportunity for individuals to make comments on those specific agenda items. But at this time, would anyone like to make any other public comments? Seeing no one come forward, I have no additional speaker cards for public comment period. We'll close public comment. And we'll move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Seeing none? Move on to new business. Item 6A pertains to the Camarillo Airport Authority. Staff have a report?
Mr. Chairman, I think we might need to approve the minutes. Was that already done?
We already did that.
I'm sorry. I'm behind. Never mind.
Okay.
Thanks for checking.
Yep. Thanks.
Does staff, would staff like to present item 6A, authorization for the Director for Airports, does indeed to accept, sign the grant in regards to the master plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Let me introduce this briefly. I've been here about 11 months now, going on almost 12 months here soon. One of the first things I noticed that when I came onboard is when I started meeting with all of the respected leaders of the county, the different cities, the managers, the councils, the supervisors, the advisors on all the committees that we have, from the commissions and the authorities, and basically anybody I could meet with one-on-one, I realized very quickly that we don't seem to currently have what I would hope for as sort of the quarterback of the club here or the team, a what I call a complete unified vision for our two airports going forward. So it quickly came to my attention that a worthy item for us might be to do a master plan study. That is something that's done about every 10 years anyway, ours is due, and we're able to get funding from the FAA for that because of the time lapse it's been since the last one. What we hope to accomplish in this 12 to 18 month study will be an entire look at both of our airports. The study is labeled a Camarillo master plan study, but we have worked with the FAA to incorporate different elements of the study to include more of a system plan. So we're going to be looking at actually both of our airports, Camarillo and Oxnard, and we're going to be seeing how those two airports feed our transportation system, our aviation transportation system for the county of Ventura for the next decade and beyond. Again, it's about a 12 to 18 month study. We're going to have numerous public workshops involved with this study in different locations of the county where we and we are very much hoping for a lot of participation from all parties that may have an interest in our airports and the future of our airports. And that's what this study is about, Mr. Chairman, and that's what we're trying to do tonight. This element is for the grant. We have reached out to the FAA to partner with us on this. The study itself is about a $741,000 study. We're going to have about $600,000 of it funded through an FAA grant. So really good benefactor there for what we can do on this and what we hope to accomplish with this. And I want to plant this seed now for as many people in the audience and for the people on the dais. We really are looking for a lot of support throughout the course of this study because we really need this vision answered for us going forward. So the first item here you have tonight is to allow us to accept the grant. When the grant comes, it'll be shortly after this, the FAA's talking about pretty rapid time this year, so we envision the grant being here before June. Either way, we're funded for this study with airport reserve monies. And the second item will be to award the contract to the third party that will lead the study, who is Kaufman and Associates. And so I'm sort of covering both items in one speech here, but I'm happy to take questions individually or separately as we bring these two items up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So Kip, you know, this is, I was looking at the report here that 90-plus percent is funded by the FAA and Caltrans and what is it, 5.5 out of the enterprise fund? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So is that very significant, you know, that money's coming from the FAA and also from Caltrans?
That's correct.
For the study?
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Right, and I believe with all our budget meetings that we've reviewed, that was a definite request from our board was stating that we really needed to get a strategic plan based on all the capital improvements and so forth. So I appreciate bringing this up to make sure that we're getting as much grant funds as we possibly can from FAA so that we could utilize our funding for the capital improvements. So thank you.
Absolutely.
I would motion to approve. Anyone has any other questions?
Mr. Thomas?
I think Bill wants to say something.
Yes.
I noticed that it went from 90% FAA and 5% state down a little. Did they change that this year?
No.
91.5.
This is still 90%, isn't it? No, it's not quite 90% on this one. So on this one, and maybe you can better speak to it, but you've got the numbers run better than I do, but on this one, we could only get 600,000. So it actually, I'm sorry, normally it is 90%. So your question about normal funding is 90%. On this, we could only get 600,000 because that's what we already had in the kitty, so to speak, for AIP entitlement. Thank you. I can never remember.
So Mr. Chair, in our normal 5%, we'll actually put in 5.5 as opposed to 5. Is that correct?
Is it 5.5?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't.
Yes, it might be a little bit more. I mean, the FAA is funding 87%. We'll be able to get a 5% match of those dollars from Caltrans most likely, and then we make up the difference. So I think it is a little bit more than 5.5%.
Your memo said 4.5% for the state.
For Caltrans.
So I was just wondering whether or not something had happened.
It's, no, it's 4.5%.
That's their max.
So they're, so it's 5% of federal funds, which works out to 4.5% of the actual project total. So they haven't changed that.
Do I have additional questions?
I got a second. I'm sorry.
In the statement here, it says, however, due to the length of time since the last master up, master plan update needed significant future improvements and changes in federal requirement for airport layout plans, the FAA agrees, et cetera, et cetera. So what do we see as the significant needed future improvements and layout plans, et cetera? Are there kind of many big items? Are we looking for detailed things or?
That's what the master plan study will tell us. So every 10 years, this is a normal study to be done to make sure. We've got a lot of big projects on the horizon. Both airports have major runway construction projects on the horizon. The Camarillos is in '24, scheduled for '24 right now. It's a huge, obviously a huge undertaking and project for the airport. So everything involves around that as far as the future growth, how we want to grow hangars, how we want to grow type of service, what do we want to do on the airports, what kind of airports we want them to be going forward. So the timing for the study is very relevant for both airports, particularly for Camarillo because of the upcoming runway project.
Okay. So there's nothing lurking in the bushes other than anticipated regular projects that we have needed to do, just we need to figure out where we're going from here?
That's correct. And the beautiful thing about this study is this study is determined by the people that feed this community. So the people that feed this community, including yourselves as leaders and all of the people elsewhere in the community, drive this study. They drive the future of these two airports. And that's exactly what we're hoping to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you.
Kip, I have a question. We have in our packet, we have a sample contract, or it's marked sample. Is this the grant agreement?
It is not.
Okay. Is the grant agreement that will be signed nearly identical to this?
It will be, yes.
And this is a standard one with, that the FAA?
That's correct.
Requires for all their grants?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
I do have one speaker card. Ms. Haskins, so again, do you want to speak on this topic or do you want to speak more to the contract, the item to follow? You have both.
I can broken both up. Mine kind of been between both of them as well.
You could, you can speak now if you like.
We got a second.
My concern is about the direction the airport seems to be going in. And that involves the master plan, the contract to do that, and accepting the money from the FAA. When you accept a grant, I don't know FAA grants, but when you accept a grant, it's for a purpose. And I would presume that the grants are allotted based on the type of airport that is going to be using the money. We've always been a type 2 airport. There's a lot of talk now about a type 3. That raises the weight level of planes that come in from 115,000 to 175. There's a lot of discussion about that, and you'll hear about it everywhere else anyway. But the point is, is that in the, if that's in the grant itself, then we need to think twice about whether or not we want to apply for and accept a grant before we know what we're going to be obligated to after we receive that money. If we're going to be obligated to bring in bigger airplanes, then we need to think twice about doing that. And that's my concern. The last time we had a master plan study, the big consulting firm went out and did it and came back with their great ideas for the airport, which included across one ray, runway. It wasn't perpendicular, but it was at an angle. I just remember the pictures and of course, everybody had a fit. And the third time we saw it, it was just a shadow. And I also want to make sure that the people doing this planning understand going forward what the commitments are between the city and the county and the airport users as to what the character of the airport is going to be. I don't want them to be told that, you know, we're turning into LAX and they do a plan like that, and then we've wasted 3/4 of a million dollars, mostly taxpayer money from all over the country. So my concern is that we're just, we make sure that we know where we're going before we put the money at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Kip, isn't that why we're having the study, you know, to come back with a study on the, on the, on the plan?
I'm sorry, say again, sir.
That's why we're hiring Kaufman, right, to come out with a study and on the, on the master plan? Is that correct? That's why we're having the study?
Yeah, the study is for the community.
Yeah.
To weigh in as to what the community wants to see the airports do for the next 10 years. Not for staff, not for consultants.
That's exactly.
It's for the community to tell us how they want the airports to be the next 10 years.
And that's, I think the.
And there's no tax dollars involved at all. This grant is from a user fee fund, and it's no tax dollars, so.
That's right. Absolutely.
Kip, and there, with every FAA grant, there's always strings attached, but the respective strings attached to this FAA grant does not mandate the Camarillo Airport or the Oxnard Airport for that matter to operate within certain weight constrict, with certain weights? Or does it mandate us to operate as a particular type of airport, whether it is a type 2 or a type 3, or accommodate particular types of aircraft that may? No?
Not at all. This, there's, there is no mandates of that nature at all tied to this grant.
Is the, is the idea of a master plan, you kind of already spoke to it, but that it will, that ultimately the final product will encapsulate and reflect the input provided by it or provided into, put into it by the community, by the different shareholders?
That is the sole purpose of this, of this whole study.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And input will be sought not only by, or not only from, say, pilots, those who utilize the airport, but also surrounding communities who may be impacted by its activities?
We're hoping to have workshops in all four corners of the county, and that's the entire sole purpose of this whole study.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
For the attorney, is there anything that you feel that should be added to this discussion that we're just having right now?
No.
Thank you.
Any comment, Mrs. Craven?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. My comment is that I hope that the workshops for all the communities will be very well publicized so that the public out there that's not associated with the airport and doesn't really know to look at a website or something will know that we'll be taking public comments and when the public meetings will be and where and everything. But I hope they're very well publicized. Good.
Mr. Chairman.
So, no, sir.
I would like to second Mr. Zaragosa's second, please.
I think Kelly had the first, right? Was AMB, Kelly?
Yep. I first.
And we'll second.
So Kelly, you originally made the motion to move staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaragosa, you had a second. We have a second to the second.
Well, the other half.
I'm the second second.
Just in case you didn't hear.
Yeah. So on the Camarillo side, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That passes. For Oxnard?
First, I mean, a motion to, to accept, you know, AMB.
Is this only for Camarillo?
Just for the.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's only Camarillo.
That's approved.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize. That was only for the Camarillo, so you, thank you, Oxnard, for.
Supporting.
Your vote and solidarity. We're going to move on to item B. We'll have to have a separate motion and vote on this one. Subject is approve and award the planning services contract with Kaufman and Associates. And you had already, did you say you already kind of consolidated your two presentations? Do you have some?
Absolutely. No, I mean, I have more slides if you wanted to talk more, but I found a way to summarize it, so it might save us some time thinking. We've got a couple of other items that take, that might take a lot more time, so.
Sure, but by all means, present. I mean, we have a whole slew of people out here that are.
Absolutely, yes. So just some slides we had put together, just trying to break it up a little bit because both items are the same thing. One's for the grant, one's for the contract. This is just some slides we put in there to further address. And again, my effort earlier was to summarize all that, but happy to go into these as well. But again, as you can see from this slide, it provides a visioning document to guide the county and other decision makers. It evaluates aviation demand in the region. It addresses local, regional, and national changes in aviation industry that could impact our communities and our airports. Identifies and plans for potential capital projects well in advance for the proper coordinations, approvals, financing, design, and construction. Maximizes economic development potential of the airports, or tells us how we could is what the plan, is one of the elements of the plan. Increases stakeholder and public awareness of airports and what it has to offer. This is just sort of a quick illustration of steps and processes, and we actually have this broken down if you'll go to the next step. Phase one is the initiation, the inventory of everything that the airports have now, and then the forecast that are run for those airports based off common, excuse me, current traffic and the things that we have, and then the facility requirements. And then we roll from that into phase two. All of these have public workshops and working papers associated with them. And then we get into airport alternatives. So this is an educational platform. So when we're in these public workshops and so forth, it's the job of this study to educate the public of what the possibilities are for the airports, not to advocate for or against, but to educate. So that's what the alternative section does. And then in the phase three process, you'll see where the master plan, master plan concept and capital plan starts to get formed. Definitely includes NEPA, environmental reviews of. And then airport plans going forward. And then it also in phase three starts putting together the draft final, the sequel process as determined needed, and then final approvals and documentation, which is what puts us to the end of the study. So the methods of study involvement include a planning advisory committee. Right now, there's four meetings scheduled for that. We could expand or increase that if we needed to, but the scope of work we're talking about tonight includes four of those. Public information workshops, which has four of those as well. And there'd be other multiple public information sessions in these meetings, which we have three advisory bodies, so there's at least two of these a month where there'd be constant updates coming on these. And then also to Board of Supervisors where those are public venues as well. Coordination meetings and then master plan. We're going to actually have a separate master plan website and social media. A good portion of the project that we put together is for messaging. So we've got a good portion of the money being spent just to make sure we get out and message this thing appropriately and to get the feedback we want because really that's what makes it a successful study, is getting that feedback that we're looking for. And that's what this team at this table wants. We want everybody in this community to tell us what kind of airports we want, so we can get, we can then go run those airports as per the community's desire.
So when you say about messaging, what delivery will you be doing? How will it get out?
Yeah, so I'm not the expert on social media, but I can tell you that Kaufman and Associates is who we're awarding that to, and they can come back and better report the details of that. But it's a substantial funding investment that we're making into this project, and that's part of, that's a, that's a substantial element of the funding.
Okay, that I think will be important for us to understand as well, if it's newspaper, social media, radio, to make sure that Ventura County, because gets the information.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you.
Was that all of it, or?
That was, that was all the slides on that, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have additional questions?
To follow up on, oh, sorry.
Yes.
In reaching out, will you make presentations to every city in the county, just to pull the comment?
You know, there's 10 cities in the county. The project doesn't fund 10 different cities. It does fund four right now, and we're already got an invite to maybe add one more to that, so I can envision possibly five different cities. It's just, it's just a funding mechanism, but we can tell you that of the four or five cities that will have individual presentations and workshops, we will be inviting all surrounding cities to those. And actually, all surrounding cities to all four or five of them.
To follow up on one of Kelly's questions, so Kaufman and Associates will oversee a robust reach-out campaign?
Absolutely.
And then in addition to the Department of Airports, also utilizing their channels and means to complement that and reach out?
We will definitely complement it where and when we can. We are funding this project to be a standalone project, so we are expecting Kaufman and Associates to be the lead on this project. And we think that's healthy for a lot of reasons. There's oftentimes misunderstandings or miscommunication between the public and when an airport leads something. So we think it's healthy that a third party's leading this as an independent effort. And we'll be there to support it, obviously, and help carry it forward, but oftentimes, people in the community feel more at home about expressing their desires and feelings about a, about a project or about a environment when they know they're talking to a third party. And so we, we really funded a heavy aspect of this portion so that the third party in this case can do that to the fullest extent necessary.
What do you anticipate the time span to be? How long do you think this will take?
It's a 12 to 18 month project.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there any additional questions? Any public comments on this particular item? I have no comment cards. All right. I will entertain a motion or if there's any discussion.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right. Passes. We'll move on to item C, which is both in the jurisdiction of Camarillo and Oxnard Airport Authority, and this is the approval of the revised form hangar lease agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a few opening comments, and then I would like to hand it off during the continuation of my opening comments to, we have county council here to help us address a few concerns that have been raised. And so we have an opening presentation, I guess, if you will, for this item. So I'll go ahead and get started in the essence of time. I'd just like to say that the Department of Airports has worked hard in collaboration with Cohoda and other interested parties to move forward with its need to revise old lease formats and convert to term leases, which is commonly used by airports today. The term leases are actually better for hangar owners as well, as it allows them to have abilities of lease control that the current 30-day leases do not provide. Unfortunately, the effort to arrive at a new lease format has plagued our aviation community here in Ventura for the last four or five years, but we're confident that we now have a proposed lease that is well-written and that represents both the county and the hangar owner's interest. I'm excited to say first and foremost, as a pilot and hopeful future hangar owner myself, that we do have a very solid and thoughtfully written agreement, and it includes all of the proposed terms as discussed in my letter dated back October the 3rd that went out to the Hangar Owners and Tenants Association. There have been concerns raised regarding the new lease document itself, which we are prepared to discuss tonight, and I've asked county council Tom Temple to be here to help us represent those items. We've worked with Cohoda representatives regarding these concerns and have incorporated as many of the suggested edits and comments as we could. County council is here tonight to help talk further on that. There have been statements to the effect that this is a flawed lease and it is being done quickly, and quite the contrary. This is a work that has occupied hangar owner representatives, staff, and legal resources of the county for approximately five years running. So it's definitely not been completed quickly, and it's definitely without a doubt a very strong, not a, not a quick item, and it is a very strong document. And has been well-thought out and developed by numerous professionals working across different lines of expertise. It's also important to note that while there have been those that have voiced opposition It's also important to note that while there have been those that have voiced opposition to the proposed lease, there have also been very many that have made efforts to contact me directly, some in person and some over the telephone, to let me know that they are very appreciative of the hard work and the efforts that have gone into this, and they're very satisfied with the leases you see for you tonight. In short, this is the culmination of an exhaustive, almost five-year effort that has led to a well-prepared document that is ready for approval by the Board of Supervisors and implementation. This new lease will give hangar owners so much more than what they have today with the current 30-day lease. It's my hope that we are able to continue moving forward with the process, so to hopefully bring this long-running issue to final closure. It's my assessment, after being on the job for almost a year now, that this issue has been like a cancer to our community. We really hope to get this thing resolved and healed and moved forward. And finally, I ask before Tom, before I turn it over to Tom, to address the remaining concerns that you will hear about tonight. We just want to take those head-on that have been brought up recent. I'd like to thank everyone that's been involved in this process. It has been a long and enduring process. Many of you have been involved in it for quite some time. Many of the hangar owner representatives have been involved in it for quite some time, and definitely county staff and airport staff. So I'd just like to thank everyone that has worked on this so diligently over the course of time. And before we go any further, as still the opening comments, I'd like to now ask Tom to finish our presentation on addressing some of the items before us tonight.
Is there a way that you use a different word besides cancer?
Well...
I'm sensitive to the issue.
I'm sensitive to the issue only because we've been working on this since, I think I've been on this board first term, so just as to reflect a different wording on that, just because I know we want to make sure that we're moving positively forward, and that might be taken as negative. So, just a comment.
Thank you.
Does this get me to the first slide of my presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for, to Kip, for letting me address, and I just wanted to be upfront, I'm going to talk about the legal perspective of some of the concerns that have been raised by COHODA over the lease. I believe COHODA has distributed, correct me if I'm wrong, distributed a document to the bodies that list, I counted 27 items with which COHODA has concern. I'm going to address a number of those. I'm not going to go through all of them. So there, the main point is that from a legal perspective, the lease is not deeply flawed, and it is, as you may hear, ready for prime time. By and large, it is COHODA's list of supposed flaws that is itself flawed, and then I'll get into the details of that in a second. So the Department of Airports, and you won't see this reflected in the list that COHODA gave you, but we'll go over them in a second. The Department of Airports has made a number of changes based on what COHODA has raised. So those aren't in your list, but we will, I'll point them out here in a second. We've made those changes. We believe that they are good changes, and they amount to fully one-fourth of the total number of suggestions that COHODA has made. Roughly two-thirds of what COHODA has raised are completely unnecessary, and by that, I just mean that COHODA has stated their need for, has stated their need for the changes, and there's no need to change the lease to attain the goal that COHODA has identified. And so that leaves only five items that the Department of Airports and the county have, shall we say, dug in our heels on, items that are not acceptable from a legal standpoint, and I'll get into that. So that's, that's five items, is what this comes down to. So the list that COHODA gave you has, got 27 items on it. There have been 32 changes requested over the last couple of weeks. We've implemented eight of those changes, as I said, fully one-fourth of the total number. The vast majority are unnecessary items to be changed. In other words, if we don't change the lease, COHODA still gets what it's asking for. And then there are five changes that we have rejected simply because they're not legally tenable or not something that we can do. So the, instead of going through all 32 of them, I want to, I want to dig into some highlights. So the top two rejected changes that COHODA has requested are appeals of a termination of a lease, and that's found in the sections that are shown up there on the slide, 37 through 39. And then, and then an item that would essentially allow the county, or require the county to give up its indemnity for ordinary negligence claims. The point of the numbers is, and we can quibble over whether a given suggestion is one suggestion or two, or whether there's a combination of suggestions that are spread out over multiple items. The point of the numbers here is simply to show that if you're negotiating this lease, and it turns out that the overwhelming majority of the changes that are being requested are not necessary, that there's a very few that are really just sort of headpoints that we're not going to get over, and that the county has made a number of changes, there's not really much else to do from a legal standpoint.
So each number correlates to the item on the lease. So one is the property lease. Two is, just so that, make sure people in the audience understand what these numbers represent, it's the actual hangar lease and the numbers that correlate to each section?
Yes, so the items that are identified as section numbers are section numbers of the lease, and those are the section numbers that COHODA has identified as being the sections that they were requesting a particular change to. Does that make sense?
Yes, a question. The handout that's been distributed to the public, is it also the one that has either 3:56 PM, or is it the one at 3:33 PM on the top of your handout? Whichever's, whatever's been distributed. What is the time that handout, so that we're all on the same page? And in full disclosure, I have had an opportunity to speak with the attorney for COHODA and also the general manager. I need you to express that.
Okay. The document I'm working off of says, as of 3/11/2020, 6:56 PM.
6:56?
PM.
I don't, I don't have one that says that. I have one that says 3:56 PM.
And I don't have that one.
Do, so what we're dealing with up here is the same thing the public's been given, so we're all on the same page, correct?
I don't know, because I haven't seen the one that you're referring to.
What do you, how do you feel?
We're not handing this stuff out, guys.
So this was, this is a handout that COHODA had passed out to everyone?
So, but the handout that the staff has just handed out, is you handed out COHODA's handout, or you handed out a county handout?
This is COHODA's handout.
Okay, so that's what's been handed out to the public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe so.
Chair Peralo, Chair Peralo, the handout that just went out to the members of the public was the revised Exhibit 2 dated March 10th. That's what was handed out to the public.
Thank you. Okay, so the top two rejected changes, like I said, are the appeal of determinations to another body, and then no indemnity for ordinary negligence claims. So here's, here's COHODA's complaints, and the items in the first two columns are direct quotes from the document that it was given to me, although I have abbreviated a number of them in the second column just to make it all fit. So the main point here is that COHODA claims that the lease ought to be amended or changed at this point to require that if the county wishes to terminate a lease, that there be some sort of appeal, as it says there, to the Advisory Commission or to the Airport Authority to ensure the county's actions aren't arbitrary. So the way the lease is currently written, there's a 30-day notice for any breach. The breach must be cured in that time. If the breach is not cured, the county can then send a notice to terminate the lease. That, believe it or not, does not end a lease. A lease cannot be ended that way in California. If the tenant wishes to contest the termination at that point, the county will have to go to court and get a court order, and nobody is evicted from a lease hold in California without a court order, except for in very extraordinary circumstances. So that's the rough outline of the process. So the lesssee, in other words, has a right to a court hearing. That court hearing is an unlawful detainer, is what the name of it is. Unlawful detainer proceedings are very speedy compared to civil lawsuits, very abbreviated discovery and deadlines, that sort of thing, and they are far less expensive than an ordinary civil suit. That said, tenants have the opportunity to seek a jury trial if they believe they're being discriminated against, or their rights are being infringed. It's a fairly robust system, and it is robust because it focuses on a single thing, which is possession of the, of the hangar and whether a breach has been, has occurred and whether the notice was properly given. Peripheral claims are not allowed, so you don't get into a lot of extra unnecessary things. That said, like I said, constitutional rights infringed, that sort of thing, can and are addressed in unlawful detainer courts.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
What's the difference between 38 and 26? Says compliance with laws, regulations, and policy agreements of 26. Just seems like the language is very similar to the 38, and I'm trying to understand what the difference is.
You say 26?
26.
Section 26 of the lease? Yes, so section 26 of the lease simply obligates, obligates the lesssee to comply with the laws, regulations, et cetera, that are listed there. So a failure to comply with those could constitute a breach of the lease for which a notice of breach could be sent, and ultimately, if it's not remedied, and that's the point of the notice, if it's not remedied, there could be a, an unlawful detainer process.
So is there duplication on the second part of 38 where it says, where that violation is in any way related to lessees' use of any of the one of the followings? Isn't that compliance with laws, regulations, and policies? That whole sentence, why are we duplicating? I'm just wondering.
Well, the, the import of section 38 is that the 30-day notice of breach is not required for those particular items.
Right, and so my question is, why are we duplicating the language of what is considered related to the lessees' use, because we're saying the use is in the compliance of laws, regulations, and policies? I guess that's my question. No?
I guess I don't agree that it's a duplication, given that section 38's purpose is to essentially exempt those particular items from the 30-day notice of breach provision. It operates, it serves a different purpose.
Okay, and then, thank you for that clarification. Then also, it's stated in here that it's more than just the county airport hangar aircraft. It's actually any certificates issued by the FAA. So 38. Thank you. So at the end of 38, you also include any certified certification, certificate issued by the FAA. So my understanding is you can fly somewhere else and get your license pulled for 30 days, or how do we handle that here in the airport? Do you guys know what I'm talking about? So any certificate issued by FAA, what does that mean to you?
A certificate issued by the FAA, that usually refers to either what is sometimes called the pilot's license. It can also refer to a, I'm sorry, an FAA certificate, an airman's certificate, I think is the general term, but it's a certificate under which people can perform maintenance on aircraft or fly aircraft, various things that the FAA must license for you to do.
Okay, so you're saying if that license gets pulled, then there's an immediate termination? I didn't understand that part.
No, the intent is that if a, if a, if one of the laws, regulations, rules, et cetera, that's listed here, is violated in a way that is related to the tenant's use of his or her FAA certificate. So if, even if it's not the use of the hangar or the aircraft, but he's flying an aircraft illegally in and out of the airport or something, I mean, I want to get...
So yeah, I didn't understand if it was anywhere or only compared to the airport in Camrio or Oxnard.
It's essentially to make it an aviation-related violation.
Okay, thank you. And then you said the reason why we don't need the mediator? Like, many times, you can go, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
It's the unlawful detainer, right?
Yeah, unlawful detainer is the remedy, is the way the lease is written. So the proposal from COHODA is to, the next one, aside from, and I don't want to mention before I leave it, Advisory Commission Airport Authority, they're currently not constituted to conduct that sort of inquiry. As you know, your, your mission is to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, that the Board of Supervisors can or, can adopt or not as it, as it chooses. Same thing with the Aviation Advisory Commission. So those would have to be reconstituted to do what's being proposed here, and given the way unlawful detainer works and it's, the speedy nature of it, et cetera, that I've already mentioned, it's a more than adequate remedy for this type of lease, which is a aircraft storage hangar.
I have a question.
Yes?
Getting back to supervisor long question, an example, if I violate airspace, say in Arizona, you have the right to take my hangar before I go through the process?
We do not, we do not at any point under this lease have a right to take your hangar.
No, I don't mean take my, I mean to, you know, cancel my lease.
Yes, there is a, there is a right to, under the lease, to terminate the lease for violation of, a violation of law or regulations relating to the use of an FAA certificate.
Is this before or after I go through the process? You know, usually if you violate airspace, you know, they call you, and you can get your attorney and whatever to cure that problem. My question is, before I cure the problem, have an opportunity to cure the problem, can you cancel my hangar lease?
The, we would be able to send a notice that we're terminating the lease, and then if you contested that, we would have to go to court to get you out. So you would get a court hearing.
That seems kind of draconian to me. But anyway.
Now, the, the proposal to have an appeal of a termination go to mediation or some other, what we call ADR, alternative dispute resolution, that's mediation, arbitration, that sort of thing, is something that we looked at, we considered, first of all, that would not be something that was binding. So if we went to mediation or arbitration, it would not be binding. What happens in a situation where you have a lease like this, or a contract like this, where it's essentially, you know, I don't want to say one-sided, but what the county does is, is, you know, make sure the airport keeps running and receive rent. Most of the obligations, as you can see in the lease, are obligations that the tenant has to observe. So a breach is going to be a question of whether the tenant has violated one of those obligations, and so you get to mediation. What you're facing is whether the mediator's going to find a breach or not. If the county believes a breach has occurred, has not persuaded the mediation process, well, you spend the money on that, and then you go to an unlawful detainer proceeding. And so in many instances, mediation or ADR can be more expensive than simply going to unlawful detainer court. So that's the reason, one of the reasons why we rejected this as an alternative, given the type of lease and given the nature of the violations that are likely to result in termination, mediation, and ADR, we're not going to be helpful or inexpensive.
I have a question. We recently experienced a little bit of this, and my problem with this particular clause is that it seems like you have, you go from zero to the nuke option without any in-between. Is there any other, any other way that the county could, without having a mediation or arbitration, set up at least some review process before it goes to court? Because no matter how you cut it, when you go to court, it costs a lot of money, both to the airport enterprise fund or to the individual.
Well, and that's, it's true that it costs money to go to court, it costs money to go to mediation, arbitration, it costs money to hire lawyers, period. So it's, yeah, those are excellent points, but...
I was more asking, is there some lower-level process that you could go that wasn't a, you got a violation, you got crosswise with the director, or with the airport director, and you got to straight into the final stage, which is go to court?
Well, the, again...
I'm not saying it would even happen with Kip, but I mean, I'm just saying that it's happened.
No, and this lease is not written for Kip, it's not written for me, it's written, as has been pointed out, for whoever's sitting in our chairs 20 years from now, because it's not going to be me. But the, the point is, I think that when, the reason for my explanation of the unlawful detainer process is that it always begins with a notice.
A 30-day?
Well, 30-day or a notice, if it's one of these immediate termination cases, shorter, but it always begins with a notice. You cannot go to court until you've done the notice, and if you go to court and the notice is not satisfactory, you're nowhere. And so, once that notice is given, that triggers the, what ordinarily happens in these types of situations is some sort of conversation where if the tenant believes the tenant hasn't committed a breach, the discussion can happen with the Department of Airports. The other thing is, you know, we talked about going to court and how expensive it is, probably greater than 95% of cases that do go to court settle without anybody going to any trial. And so, yes, there's an alternative resolution that happens in most of these cases. So while it can be viewed as draconian, because it's court, it's the kind of court that deals with solely this issue, like I said, it's rapid, it's relatively inexpensive.
Can I ask staff, on the, on 37, it says the default or breach, and it says that if the breach or default or breach is not remedied within 30 calendar days following such notice, do most people fall into that 30 days where they have fixed the problem, or what is the history of our airports in regards to those type of notices?
I can only speak to the 30 years that I've been doing this. At other airports, only about a year here, and yes, most of the items that I've ever seen have served notice have been corrected within the 30 days.
Okay, because I think that's where the crutch is sometimes, is to the fact that they could, weren't able to get... that they could, weren't able to get the notice in a timely fashion to then remedy the situation so that they don't go to court. And so, how do you get to remedy the situation, meet with the director within those 30 days?
And, yeah, another thing, most of the time, it's, it's based on someone not paying rent, but most of the notices that I've seen over the 30 years I've been doing this, I would say probably 90% of those are about failure to pay rent, and when the rent's caught up, it, it goes away.
So maintenance on a hangar?
Just a general statement, as, as pointed out earlier by a board member, Thomas, we're, we're an enterprise fund, it's our desire to keep as many customers as we can, we don't, we don't want to have them leave, we need their money, we need them to stay on the field, so, you know, but yeah, most of the issues that I've seen over the course of my career have been related to rent, and they're cured within the 30 days.
Mrs. Craven had a question, I want to go to her.
I have a question for the attorney, what you've been describing to us as a standard tenant eviction process in this state, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's right, and I was going to share that, because, can I, if somebody doesn't pay the rent, don't you give them a 30-day notice to bring the rent up to speed, or what, or 60 days, whatever the number is? And if they don't pay, then the, the unlawful detainer's a three-day, is that correct?
Yes, at that point.
To pay or vacate.
Correct.
And that's standard real estate transaction.
Yes, and, and that's true, not just for rent, that three-day notice is what's required for any breach of a lease.
Breach of.
If the unlawful detainer can.
Either cure or, or.
Correct.
Or move out. Okay.
Any additional questions, then, otherwise, will that counsel continue?
Can you explain, please, the calendar, how this works, 30 days from the time you send it, 30 days from the time you get a return receipt, registered mail, how does this work, where does the clock start? What triggers it?
That's a great question, I'd have to remind myself the way the lease is worded.
You post it in the door.
You post it on the door.
Post it in the dorm, and it's 30 days from there.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the lease again, but it's, it's either, depending on how the lease is worded, it's either at the time the, the notice is mailed, or, or when received, depending on how it's worded, and I don't remember.
It says 30 days following such notice, the other party has the option, as it is, to terminate this agreement.
Right, normally you'd find the answer to the question in the section that describes how notice must be given.
And Mr. Templeton, normally you can hand it, or.
Section 56.
Mail it, or register mail, or hand it to the person, and 30 days starts from that day, that time?
Yes.
The follow-up question I have on that, person's on vacation, and you don't know where he is, but you know where his mailing address, and you know where his hangar is, and his vacation happens to lapse over that 30, you get three days and have to be out, and he came back, surprise, I got to be out. That could happen?
It could, it does.
Okay, thank you.
The notice and payments is on 56.
And, not that it's, it's indicative of anything, but the last eviction for the airport that I handled, the individual lived out of state, and did not get the notice within the three days, even though it was a three-day notice to pay or quit, very simple, you've gotten your notice, do you want to respond? If you don't respond, we're going to go to court. He said, you know, we gave the individual time to respond, the individual didn't respond, and, and then, he actually said, "Go to court, get your order." So, that three-day notice is the bare minimum, but, you know, if I'm advising a client, don't walk into court with the bare minimum, walk into court, you know, being able to show that you gave, you know, a very good effort. The, so the next thing I want to talk about is the second of the two items I identified as the two rejected items, sort of the top two rejected items. This one is, it's a little bit bizarre, because it has to do with indemnification, which is, can give you a headache if you think about it too long, but in any event, the idea here is that Cohoda would like it so that a tenant would only have to indemnify the county, not in cases of ordinary negligence, but only in cases of gross negligence or intentional misconduct. That's a non-starter, as far as the county is concerned, the overwhelming majority of cases or claims that are brought, especially in a circumstance like an airport, are going to be ordinary negligence, so the proposal here is that the county ought to give up its indemnity for the overwhelming majority of tort claims that would be brought against it, it's just, I could not advise the county to, the Board of Supervisors to approve such a lease. So that's, that's one that we have rejected, and it's not one that I think the county's likely to budge on. So those are the two, the top two termination provisions, the other ones that we have, I'm not, sorry, not termination provisions, so the top two items that the county has sort of rejected outright, the other three, as I said in the beginning, there are five of them, the other three are less interesting, one has to do with for-sale signs on the exterior of hangars, the other has to do with liens on aircraft, another has to do with the subordination of the agreement to federal agreements, that's Sections 18, 40, and 46, respectively, and we considered them, we looked at what Cohoda was proposing, and we can't agree to them. So the remainder of my discussion is going to be about the items that are unnecessary, and I'm not going to pick it and go through all 19 of them, just in the interest of time, I've picked five that illustrate what I'm talking about when I say that it's not necessary to make these changes for Cohoda to get what they're looking for. So Cohoda here is concerned about identity theft, and the woman who spoke earlier, whose name I don't remember off the top of my head, Ms. Haskins, is that a, thank you, Ms. Haskins talked about this concern. This is not a new concern for the county, the, the file cabinets in the Hall of Administration are filled with people's personal identifying information, many, if not all, of those documents are in somewhere or other a public record. The Public Records Act is straightforward, it says if there is redactable information in a public record, it must be redacted before the record is disclosed, there's not really any way around this problem. There's been a suggestion, at least at a previous meeting, that the items that could potentially constitute the basis of identity theft be placed in a separate document, that separate document is also a public record, would have to be redacted before being disclosed, so, this is just not something that's necessary. The practice at the county is to train people, to teach people, that when a Public Records Act is received, personal identifying information must be removed, yes, does that sometimes slip through the cracks? I'm sure it does, there's just not a way to avoid that, but, so we, this change, making this change is not going to change what happens when a Public Records Act request comes in.
So, they retract, they just put a black mark on it, so you can't read it? How is it that it's provided to the public?
These days, most redaction, as I understand, is done using PDF, and the PDF redaction function, which actually removes the information and can't be retrieved, but, you know, an agency can do it however the agency wants, I don't know how the Department of Airports does it.
In, in requesting a copy of this document, would the county redact the pilot's license number, is that personally identifiable, identifiable information?
I don't.
In the county's eyes, is that something they would redact?
If it's a social security number, it would have to be redacted.
But you wouldn't know that, you wouldn't know if it is or is not, would you?
I'd tell.
Yeah, I, I think a social security number would look different from a pilot's certificate number.
Can you clarify the pilot's license, would it be redacted? Social security, we understand that, but what about the pilot's?
A pilot's certificate number, no, that's something that you can look up on the internet.
Okay. And then, does a pilot have an option to not use their social security?
They do.
Like, I try not to give my social security to anyone.
Yeah, so several years ago, the FAA changed it, where if you did not want to use your social security number, you could, all you had to do was notify the FAA, they give you a new pilot's number, I had to do the same thing myself, I started flying in 1985, when they came out with the provision of being able to issue a different number, I did not want my social security number to be, continue being used for my pilot's certificate, and it's a simple process.
And is there any worry about doing that? Do they relook at your application or something? Why would someone not want to do that?
There would be no reason other than they just don't want to change their number.
Okay, thank you.
The next item has to do with Section 17 of the lease, Cohoda's complaint is that erecting shelves or building a workbench might require some sort of building code approval. If, if you read the lease, that section of the lease, it says that the improvements that it's talking about are those that are needed, basically the structural soundness and safety of the building. So, again, I, this is not a change that needs to be made to make the lease any better, it's already says what it.